So then, the, do we do the announcement before or after, Debra?
You can do it first off if you just want to get it out of the way.
Yeah, I'd like to just get it out of the way. So would you like to make the announcement now?
Sure. All right, this is a report out from closed session. Closed session was held today, starting at 5:06. The city council discussed two matters, conference with legal counsel, anticipate litigation to cases. Direction was given to legal counsel. No reportable action was taken. The meeting concluded at 5:51, and that's all. That's all, there.
Okay, thank you. All right. So the City of San Juan Baptista, city council meeting, regular meeting of May 19th, 2020, is now in session. Vice Mayor Jordan, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic.
Stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Oh, yeah. So roll call.
Mayor Edge?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember De Vries?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Okay, so before we get started, we're going to reorganize the agenda. So we're moving item 7B, I believe it is. 7B to be 4B. It will become 4B. Make that note to your agenda. So now we go on to public comment, and public comment is on items that are not on the agenda. So do we have anybody making a public comment?
Please raise your hand if you do. Could you raise your hand if you have a comment?
Do we have anybody raising their hand?
I do not see any. I see 19 participants, and I don't see anyone raising their hands. So that being said, the speaker would like to speak to things on your behalf.
Okay, all right. So then we'll go on, and we'll go on to the consent items. All matters listed under the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion authorizing actions indicated for those items not designated. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by a member of the city council, a staff member, or a citizen. So does anybody have anything that they want to move? Or pull? Okay.
Any hands, council?
Okay, so if not...
Would you like to make a motion for the consent items?
Okay, thank you. Councilman Flores made a motion.
I'll second it.
And Jordan seconds.
Hello?
The roll.
Comment?
Was there a comment?
Nope.
Okay.
Councilmember De Vries?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Flores?
There's a lot of noise coming through. I can't make out what's going on.
Sorry?
We're taking roll, we're doing, voting by roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Okay, good. Oh, that was Freeman.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the mayor passes unanimously.
Thank you. So now we go on to item four, presentations, informal items, and reports. So we'll have the monthly financial statements by our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, we should be at about 75% in our revenues and expenses right now. So as you look at this report, you might look for numbers that are above or below that. The CFDs, community facility districts, of course, are below that because the property taxes are just coming in for April. And so as I look at the revenues, that's one issue I see. Another issue is capital money for the sewer is only at 5%, and that's because most of those funds were received as direct payments from our development, to developments in the prior year. So no, nothing unusual on the revenue side. On the expense side, we're starting to get into the end of our fiscal year. The gas tax is running a little bit high, but that's okay. That's money going towards our Third Street improvement.
When you have time?
Other expenses, oh, Jill is up there. This is, I'm sorry.
I should see if you take one of these boards off, but I was gonna...
So there's nothing unusual in this report, nothing to really talk about unless the council has specific questions. I'd be happy to respond.
Yeah, that's happened.
So somebody needs to mute themselves, please. Please mute yourselves.
Yes, 3140222334 needs to mute.
Is that all, Beth?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so now we'll go on. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilman Flores, do you need any, do you need to ask a question? On financial report?
No.
No, okay. Councilman Freeman, do you have any comment questions?
No.
Okay. Councilman De Vries, do you have any comments or questions?
No, no comments or questions.
Okay, thank you. And Vice Mayor Jordan?
No.
Okay. So do we have any public comment?
Raise your hand if you do.
Raise your hand if you have a comment or a question. No, okay. So now we've got, we'll go on to item 4B, which is the COVID report.
What we have, right, so originally we have the manager's monthly report, and then behind that, the COVID report. So in the city manager's monthly report, there is, of course, a lot of COVID in it, which is why we would consolidate the two together. Wrapping up the city gate report, the organizational study, and the fiscal analysis, that's on your agenda tonight. Changing our planning department into one that relies entirely on contractual services under the COVID-19 scenario, but hopes of returning to a staff's community development department in the future. So that will come out in the details of the budget as we move forward. The budget in finance at mid-year, the city invested not only in a fiscal assessment, but in a new software package referred to as ClearGov. So this is the first time our budgeting has been integrated with our QuickBooks, and it's becoming quite an easy and user-friendly tool. And the best result will be that when we post this on our website, it'll be easy for the community to understand and get a hold of. You'll see that our priorities, you'll see where our priorities are by where our funding is. And that's the best tool that we could bring forward for you. It's made putting the budget together a lot easier, and thank goodness, because there's been less time to do that this year. We are seeking a proposal and planning for an urban growth boundary project. It's apt to be rather expensive, so when we get that proposal, we can share it with the council. It would come from David Mack, our senior planner, who produced the staff reports earlier this year. There was a proposal also to put together an ad hoc committee of two council members and two planning commissioners and a member of the public at large to further the urban growth boundary study forward. And that would be coming, hopefully, June 1st, when we reopen City Hall. We'll be able to have a planning commission meeting June 2nd, the first one in a long time. So we'll be able to talk to the planning commissioners about who would be best suited from the planning commission for that ad hoc committee. And then the council will have time to discuss it after that. And we'll have the ad hoc committee and the CIP in place to move forward with the urban growth boundary project. Probably one of the only general fund projects we'll have in our CIP this fiscal year due to the financial uncertainty caused in our sales tax and transit-oriented tax. In Public Works, we also have on this agenda the pavement management plan, which is a great tool for guiding our capital improvement projects into the future. We're looking at a 17 or 18% reduction in Measure G as well as SB 1 funds, but still those funds will be available, and they can help us make a dent, continue to make a dent in our pavement management program. Code Enforcement was reassigned as our emergency operations chief, been working full-time with us. He has a report under the COVID section that to just enlighten us on what's been happening on his end of the COVID project. We are still doing code enforcement, working a lot with abandoned vehicles, people living in recreational vehicles. But during this emergency, the homeless are protected, and it's just a hard issue to deal with right now. So bear with us while we struggle with that. The plastics ban should have gone into, should have gone into, should be in place now, according to the law. It is in place now. We lost our help from CSMB students. They were going to help continue to educate our community, our retail and restaurants between January and now. And so we need to pick this back up in July, and when we get our feet back on the ground and move forward with the plastics ban. Because that's, it's, has not been forgotten, still an important piece. Some of the to-go orders are honoring it, and some are not, so it's all a matter of adjustment from everyone concerned. We did talk about the water supply and the issues related to that. We noted that the EPA is looking for a solution to our wastewater treatment plant by December 2023. And so just wanted to know that that is a focus, a huge focus of what we're doing at City Hall right now, is working on that issue specifically, the wastewater, the water sources, and dealing with us getting in compliance. So with that, we have the COVID report, and I have a quick COVID report as I usually do. And I'll share my screen right now, and we'll bring that up for everybody to see. Here it is. There we go. There we go. Okay, all right. So our municipal code requires that we reaffirm the need to continue our state of emergency, and that is true. So without, I'll move to the next focus. The council's aware that I wrote a letter to Congressman Panetta. And to my surprise, they called me in my office this week saying, hey, don't give up. We'll find money for local government. The HERO Act was passed by the House of Representatives Friday. It doesn't sound like they're getting much appeal from the Senate, but there's a lot of things in that act. And just one piece of it is a trillion dollars set aside for state and local governments. Congressman Panetta's office explained to me that should that trillion dollars stay intact, that San Juan Baptista would be in line for $600,000 this fiscal year and as much as $300,000 in the next fiscal year. He explained that the country is in the reaction stage, so that there might be even more recovery dollars to come in our direction. When we worked through the 2008 crisis, for example, the unemployment was very high at that time as well, and the federal government relied on infrastructure, infrastructure projects for local government to reemploy America. So that's an opportunity that we look forward to, because we've got some infrastructure projects to do. So I hope the federal government will finally step up and begin to help us out in this regard. So that's where I am with that, and then, whoops, I got my, sorry, I'm monkeying around here. It's a stretch, because it's way over here. There we go. All right. I wanted to go into a little bit of detail on the county. Okay, there we go. There's the federal. Oh, looks like I missed a page. Okay, okay.
You want to see my page?
That would be great. Could I share your page?
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
So the governor's update, it was real important. The governor was on television, I sound old-fashioned, huh? Yesterday at noon, and he discussed how in the past 14 days, the state has seen a 7.5% decline in the number of hospitalizations, along with an 8.7% decline in the number of ICU patients. And that is, that encourages him to begin to reconsider further listening of the restrictions of the state of shelter in place. He announced that he'd be making statements in the next few weeks, rather than a few months, on a statewide basis to allow for in-store retail with modifications, sporting events without spectators, and potentially haircuts. And so he's treading on that line between what we call Phase 2 and Phase 3. The haircuts and the sporting events would be Phase 3. So we'll see where he goes with that. Unfortunately, it caused some confusion here on the local end, but things seem to be back in order, and I'll get to that as we move through this status and update. There will be new guidelines forthcoming for the faith-based community, but they still won't be able to congregate in large numbers until we're ready for Phase 2. So Phase 2B, where we are now, the Phase 2 variance was accepted a week ago by the state, so we have dine-in restaurants, we're aware of that. Retail can open with limited capacity inside, especially for our small spaces. And then malls can open for curbside pickup, and then also car washes and pet room. The following are not open at this time, and I wanted to make sure that this list was shared with everyone so that we understood. Personal service, oh, Jesus. Personal services such as hair and nail salons, tattoo parlors, gyms, fitnesses. Hospitality services such as bars, wineries, tasting rooms, and lounges. Entertainment venues, which we're aware of, community centers, public pools, playgrounds, and picnic areas. Religious services, we already talked about festivals, they're still on the not-to-do list. So I just wanted to share that with everyone, and this is from the state, and we're working under the state's order. So with that, focusing on the county, there are now 63 cases that have been identified in our county.
Oh, it went up.
Seven active cases now, and that's up from five last week. And it was important to hear from Public Health Today that 67% of the new cases in the last couple of weeks are from Spanish-speaking individuals who typically live in crowded housing. So that's something that they're watching closely as a vulnerable population. Well, I'm sure we all know that, not only while they're on the job, but while they're not on the job. New testing remains open, and right now it's scheduled to move to Anzar High School because our spaces were too small, our community center, our community hall, I mean, they need a big space. I had the pleasure of being tested yesterday, and they use all of the veterans' hall. They space them out thoroughly, and you feel very safe there, but there aren't very many people in the room. So they need a big space, and so that's why they're, that's why they're heading towards Anzar High School rather than the community hall.
Excuse me for a second. Do you have a phone number that we can put up for people to call to get tested?
There is one.
So I was able to do that through going to the Public Health website.
Okay, I just want to throw it out there to everybody.
Yeah, so you go to the Public Health website, and there's Optium, I think the name of the company is, has a link. Yeah, and you click on that, and you answer lots of questions. They ask you for health insurance, but if you don't have it, they don't, they're not prepared to charge for money, or charge for any of these tests. So I guess those are just free. And I was able to register Monday morning and get in Monday afternoon. So it didn't seem real busy to me. We're lucky to have it, because that's how we got into this variation, this second variation that was accepted by the state. So yeah, last week, we learned this, and we started getting ready for this, and this later on the agenda. Gosh, I wish this would control itself. Okay. So we're in Phase 2 now with dine-in restaurants and destination retail. Schools could open with modifications, none have opened that I'm aware of. The county's recommendations for schools, for businesses that are reopening are to follow the guidance for each related industry. For restaurants and retail, there's specific guidance. Post a copy of the completed guidance checklist at your business. Critical self-certify and post on your business that you've completed the checklist, that you're following the guidance for your business. That's really important for your clientele to know. Should the guidance not be followed, the county's at risk of a possible surge. You will need to assess the need for county-specific, again, another SIP order. The health officer continues to monitor the need for face covering orders. That was a big deal today at the Board of Supervisors. The face covering is seen by some in our community as a real violation of someone's, I don't know.
Freedom.
Yeah, freedom. Very, thank you. You watch the same thing. So locally, City Hall will partially reopen June 1st. We have some events coming this weekend, and we have a First Five Food Distribution Friday at San Juan School. And that's from 10:30 to 12:00, Mayor?
Yes.
Food and protective power equipment, protective power equipment. I've got my Public Works hat on. There'll be a drive for farm workers this weekend, and fire station, our fire station here in San Juan is participating. Thank you, Chief, for doing that and including us. We have some flyers coming out through Assembly Member Rivas's office. We'll get them out to as many people as we can. There's a new program that's quite interesting. It's called Great Plates. The city looked into hosting Great Plates, but it was a little too complicated for our capacity, and the county gracefully offered to help out with that. And as a result, two out of the eight local restaurants participating are from San Juan Baptista, so that's really great.
Shout out to who?
The Mission Cafe and JJ's will be cooking food for seniors. They have 102 different meal signups already, and those are also, San Juan Baptista is also represented in that number. For those of you familiar with the program, you have to be over 65 or 60 years old with a disability. You have to be living by yourself or living with another qualified person. If you receive meals on wheels or any other kind of help, you're not eligible. So it's a tough program to be eligible for. Not many in our community qualify, but I'm glad that they're participating, and they're in line already. So I don't want to have you like pages.
You need mine again?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So the next report is the Community Liaison Report.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Post office pickleball, plan to redesign Third Street?
Those are on the list to be covered?
They are. Last page of, right after Great Plates.
Thank you, thank you. Rich Brown followed up on the post office for us. He agreed, the postmaster agreed to invest in accessible door locks for 24/7 access. So this is a good compromise between him being able to maintain this facility, but letting residents have access 24/7.
So that, how is it going to happen?
Electronic door locks. So each person will get not just a key to their post office box, but a card that they swipe.
So the lobby will be open?
Right, for those having cards, like entering your hotel room.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank Rich for that. I hope it happens sooner than later. Pickleball did not reopen. Oh, is there, does anyone else, others have questions on that?
We can finish the...
Okay, yeah, let me just get through the end of this. Pickleball did not reopen. The school district's decision was not to reopen its facilities. And so even though you can play tennis and possibly pickleball singles anyway, or with family members in the county, the health department said that was okay, the school district had to make the hard decision to keep them shut because people are going on campus and hopping the fences, and they didn't want to invite people on their facility. We have a plan to reopen Third Street and redesign Third Street, and that's on our agenda tonight. So that's later in the meeting.
Go ahead and keep it.
Okay.
Just in case.
Yeah, just in case. I'm sorry, I didn't, yeah.
Okay, that's all right.
I don't know why these pages are right here. Okay. The Community Liaison Update is really intense. Liz Turner has been working 40 hours plus. What she's doing is really critical, is getting these guidelines to each business owner and getting to know each business owner. And so I should be sharing with you right now a list of businesses that are reopened. And there are 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 16, 17 businesses that have reopened. A Velo did not close, Windmill did not close. Vertigo is open for limited hours, but it's great. We have, we have The Rock Shop, as well as the Ice Cream Parlor, Utopia. Donia Esters opened yesterday, JJ's Burgers has stayed open, Inaka, Sweet Pea Antiques, Vintage Roast, Third Antiques. And then businesses will be opening within the week include Mission Cafe, I believe, tomorrow, the 18th Barrel later this week, and Natural Wonders. So those are great successes in getting our businesses reopened. So everyone's feeling a sigh of relief, I hope. And I have a great, oh, there's five people in the waiting room. Okay. The focus for the last four weeks, meeting with business owners in person, on site, and on the phone, helping them prepare for reopening procedures and understanding and interpreting the guidelines. That's, she's been very busy. It's very time-consuming. Regularly attending county, state, federal trainings and updates, and also continuous monitoring of the FEMA and training and certification. So she's been super busy, and then I got this picture off of Facebook today, which is really cool.
It's Tammy.
It's a picture of Tammy reopening Donia Esters. So then with that, ah, okay, I don't know what happened to my PDF, but it is what it is.
So Councilman Flores, do you have any questions or comments?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Freeman, comments, questions?
I'm just really glad to see the retail's starting to open back up, and the restaurant's opening up for takeout and limited seating. I think it's a good thing.
Thank you. Councilman De Vries, any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. I did have a question for the city manager. Don, what are your thoughts about timing for reopening the park, like parks, plural? Like Abbey Park across the street from me, or Verudy Park, et cetera?
So that's a great question, council member. We learned this week that if we can wipe down the public restrooms three times a day, is what they're practicing in Hollister, that we can reopen the restroom in Verudy Park, and we could reopen everything but the play area. And the same is true with Abbey Park. We would have to keep the ballfields closed, but we could open the whole north, north portion of the park and the restrooms. They don't, they want us to discourage picnicking and barbecues. So I don't know if we could bring the tables back yet, but those are two areas where we could begin to reopen, and I just need to coordinate with our maintenance staff to make sure that we can clean the restrooms frequently enough.
Okay, so the ballfield portion of Abbey Park, however, would remain closed?
Yeah, sports, sports events, sports, sports, sports that require teams, I'll put it that way. So you can golf and run and bike and pickleball, but you can't, you can't play baseball, you can't play football or soccer. So for that reason, the soccer fields have remained closed by the school district property.
So that the idea would then be to keep the yellow tape around the ballfield portion of Abbey, but then open up the corner of McCollumian Force?
Yes.
Okay, great.
It's progress.
Yeah, something.
Something.
Okay, good. Is that it?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Vice Mayor Jordan?
Two bars are opening? One is open and one is opening?
Right. So I, while I was getting my test in Hollister, I stopped by a bar and had a few drinks before I came back to work. Um, no, whiskey.
Well done.
Whiskey.
The Whiskey Creek.
Whiskey Creek. And sure enough, they were open. No, I didn't go in. They had about six clients in there. And at that point, I got a call from Liz saying, oh my gosh, one of our bars wants to open. And that's clearly level three and, and not allowed. And then I shared that with you earlier in the slides, that, that level three includes bars. So what this place in Hollister has done and has met the criteria of the health department is sell food. So they started offering food. And the health officer, per my request, the county was very supportive in responding, came out this afternoon and inspected the first bar that was opening. And they are also offering food and decided that they were okay, that they were okay to open.
Oh, so they're offering food?
So they're no longer a bar, apparently?
It, it was my understanding that you had to serve food and they could have drinks with it.
That, that was also my understanding. And, and so, and I think I have Rich on the phone. And Rich, I don't know if you can chime in here. He was in an enforcement meeting yesterday and has been very involved with the bars. Rich, can you hear us?
Yeah, yes. Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Yes. Go ahead.
Yep. Your, your question regarding you serve the food, you serve the meal with the, with the drink, that's correct. The unfortunate part is these are guidelines, they're not regulations.
So because it's not a regulation, it's a guideline, they're allowed to stay open?
Correct.
So that anybody, any bar that offers food cooks it, do they have to cook it there? Is that it?
Basically, yeah. What it is, is you order your drink, you order your meal. The, I went along with the health inspector today, and one of our concerns was that pizza would not be considered a meal. They were doing deliveries of pizza and serving that with the alcoholic beverages. But the health inspector has no problem with that. And if you really think about it, I'm sure all of us have sat down and fed ourselves with pizza and only pizza.
So they could buy pizza from a, a place downtown and take it with them and eat it there and drink their beer?
No, for, for Unamas, what they've done is they've, they've got three contracts. They have a contract with JJ's, one with Dona Esther's, and one with Hardin's. So they're, in addition to that, when those facilities close in the, in their, their facility, the Unamas is still working in order to fulfill their requirement of food and drink, then that's when they would serve their pizzas.
So if I walk into a bar, I, I feel a joke coming on. If I wa-
So a council member walks into a bar.
If one council member walks into a bar, no, if I walk into a bar and just order a beer or a cocktail and not have food.
You wouldn't be able, you would not be able to. You'd have to order food and the drink would come with your meal.
But I mean, how do you, how do they, do they bring the food in from Dona's and, and JJ's? Do, do they have it there?
Like a buffet or something?
No, it's not a buffet. That, that was pointed out to the health officer. The health officer made it clear that they have to make sure that it's not a self-help. It has to be delivered to them and they do it with, with social distancing using trays.
Okay, so it's delivered to who? To the patron or to the bar owner?
As far as the delivery of the food, it comes into one end of their establishment. And then as the people make their orders, my understanding is you're going to place their orders and they would call the order in, the order would arrive, they get their drinks. It's a complex deal. It almost, it, it seems a lot of, like a lot of work for a little reward, but they're choosing to do that.
Well, it's a big reward because we're not enforcing it.
It's hard to enforce guidance.
Say that again?
Guidance is more of an educational thing.
So we're, but we're not enforcing it, is what Leslie said.
Once again, there's, right now, there's nothing to enforce it because these are the guidelines. As long as, they came down and they said that as long as you're serving the food with the drink, and then the big concern is we want to make sure that it's, it's healthy in the sense that it's, it's not contaminated. That's the, that's the concern.
So, so that's why it has to come from one of our local restaurants. And, and now, forgive me, I, I might have already asked this, but so the, the bar owner orders the meal, not the patron?
No, my understanding was the patrons would order the meal through the owner of the Unamas and then they would place the order. I, I don't know what their logistics are like. What the concern was, was where is the food going to be kept? And also that is it going to maintain temperature? That was basically the concern, was the health of the food that they're going to be getting. Will people come in and get food and then get another drink? All those questions we, we posed yesterday at an enforcement meeting. And, and the hope is sometime this week, we're going to get some clarification in some direction in what the intent of the guidelines, if the guidelines weren't in fact supposed to be regulations or just guidelines, we need to find out.
So at the same time, they were trying to open yesterday, Rich was in a conference call with 15 other people.
They were actually open on, on Sunday.
On Sunday?
Yeah, and Monday. So I, I'm, I'm just confused if, if the state says bars can't open and a bar is not serving food.
But they are.
Right.
But they, but they, and it's, it's not, they're not really serving the food. They're buying the food from a local.
Right. And they have a contract to do that. So, so the brewery next door is, is going to do that. They have a catering truck. If you've been to those events.
Oh, yeah, that's totally awesome. Right.
So the catering truck is coming back and, but they have a contract and that's how they're going to be providing that. But that's allowed in their use permit. It's, they, they planned ahead years ago to do that.
Absolutely.
Right.
This is more of a reaction.
Okay. Okay.
So, okay, I'm beating a dead horse.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, I, you know, I'd like to just add one more thing is that there, there might just be a kind of a lack of coordination inasmuch as I've been in contact with ABC. And ABC had a concern that they, they emailed Todd and was asking if there was a problem serving the food. It was almost as if they didn't realize that these directives came down, these state direct, or guidelines came down. So on one hand, you've got them saying you can open your bar, but you have to serve food. And then you have another entity who says, wait, wait, are you allowed to sell food? So there's still confusion. I think we're, this, this is a new area that probably needs a more investigation. But hopefully, I would rather, I would prefer erring on the side of the business rather than what, what I may think their, their intent was.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Rich. Did I give the councilman, Councilman Flores, did you have a question or comment?
Do I have what?
Question or comment?
No comments.
Okay. Councilman Freeman, question?
No comment.
Okay. Councilman De Vries, question or comment?
Yes, I'd just like to make one comment, Madam, and you can still hear me. It seems that with the provision that a bar can be open if it serves food, and food means that they just call JJ's or Dona's or anywhere else to get food while they sit in the bar, isn't that the same thing as just saying our bars are open? Because every bar would be able to do that.
Um, yeah.
Daisies will do that. Bear's Hide will do that. Eighteenth Barrel will do that. Everyone will say, oh, but our patrons can order Dona's takeout, so we're serving, we're serving food, quote unquote.
Yep. That's what it's saying.
Yeah, that's true. That's what it's saying. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Councilman, I mean, Vice Mayor Jordan?
Nope.
Okay. All right. All right. So, okay, well, you know, we'll go on. We're, I already forgot where we were.
4C.
7A. I mean.
Do we, do we get your, your managers report? We didn't.
Yeah, we did.
We did. We're on 4C.
So we're on 4C. Oh, wait, do we have any public comment on, on any of this stuff?
You have the Eighteenth Barrel there.
Where are they?
Hi.
There you go.
Hi.
There you go. There you go. Eighteenth Barrel.
They're on mute still.
Oh, they're still muted.
I don't know why.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
No, they're still muted.
They're muted again. They're there.
Oh, you muted them.
Stop.
They got muted again. There.
There. Nobody touch their computers. Go. Monica!
So I had a comment on the whole bar thing because I am considered a bar. I have a 40th license. But the 8C released a new guideline for the fourth notice regulatory relief. And that's where the whole confusion pops about and the bar.
So they've updated it.
It talks about, I didn't get any of that information on the release form as far as ordering food outside and having it delivered to the patron. You're supposed to actually have food on site and it has to be a bona fide meal. So like with my area, because I do have the courtyard in the outside area, and I do already have that permitted for food truck and sort of that. So those are the kind of contracts that you're allowed to do as far as on your premises. So if like the food truck, I have a contract with the food truck, you go ahead and there are plates of food, then I'm allowed to have, in the same transaction, the food and the alcohol served at one time. And, and do that transaction at one time on the premises, not ordering food from other places and restaurants and having it delivered. I wasn't aware of that, but the new relief gives a whole guideline on what you're allowed to do.
Okay.
So that was my understanding of it, that you're not allowed to do the whole ordering food and having it delivered, that you're supposed to have the food on site on the premises, either, either if you have a kitchen or in my case, the courtyard with truck.
That, that was my understanding as well when I received my call from the county health today.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Monica.
So what's at risk then? The business could have their, their alcohol license at risk.
Yeah.
Which is a big deal.
All right.
So it's probably best if, if someone like maybe Dan could read it, because he's more aware of all the, like the logistics of everything. So, you know, that way we all can be on the same page and understand it a lot better.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll get, we'll get Liz to go and take a look and maybe take a copy of it for us.
Okay.
Okay?
That would be perfect.
Okay, great.
And we're supposed to apply, apply for it as well. We can't just open without applying for it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much for that clarification. Okay. So do we have any other?
Yes, yes.
What's going on?
Who's that?
Get louder.
I think we wait and they go ahead and got off. Everyone who's registered already, wait to register again. So as soon as that, that we, when it comes out, automatically get it. So I have to go ahead and fill it out. And it has to show the area where everything, which is like courtyard where the food's coming in. So I have to go ahead and send.
A diagram.
A diagram of that. Plus, plus the form all filled out. And then we'll, and then actually we, and after we submit it, we're announced.
Okay.
May I come up?
Okay, thank you.
Well, you might have to correct a couple of things.
We're having a hard time hearing you. But thank you so much for your input.
Thank you.
Did Deb have something to say?
Deborah, did you have something to say?
No.
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Do we have any other comment or question?
Yes. Hello, good evening.
Who is this?
This is Jackie Morris Lopez.
Oh, hi, Jackie.
Hey, hi. I'm in my car, so I'm on my phone. I may cut out, but I'm, this is a comment on the bar issue and the subject of COVID-19, correct? I don't have an agenda in front of me.
Yes, it's on, it's, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
We're on that topic. Your time is good.
So it sounds like, sounds like there's just a lot of ambiguity and like the code enforcer, Mr. Brown said, they're not regulations, they're merely guidelines. And I'm just wondering, as a city resident and a consumer, and I always bring my profession, a healthcare provider, what's the rush? Okay. It sounds to me like, I understand, everybody's been shut down and sheltered in place. Businesses are hurting, the town is hurting. But what is the rush to tweak the regulations, defend the guidelines? You're a bar, you're a bar, you want to serve alcohol, fine. Beware, this virus does linger in the air for eight minutes or longer. And when you're at a bar, you're in a small space with many people. So there's a lot of things that have to be considered. You guys make it okay to open a bar if you serve food, if you serve it there, if you order it out. Point being is that what is the rush? And you're in a small confined area, you want to sell food, you want to sell beer, I get it. Why not wait for the recommended phase three? I feel like we really need to take the higher ground versus our neighbor to the east where everybody is ranting and raving and appearing at board of supervisors meeting, claiming that their rights are being violated, their constitutional rights are being stomped on. This is a pandemic. And I know that Mr., I'm sorry, city manager, I forgot your name at the moment, but I know that you're married to a position, so I'm sure you have many conversations at home regarding this pandemic. And I think we have, San Juan has to take the higher road in our county and be smart. We have a lot of intelligent people that live here, a lot of professional people, a lot of hardworking people. And we don't have resources like other counties. Yes, Hazel Hawkins is saying that your numbers are low, but you realize that it's a big, big COVID case. That case is being transferred to a medical center. So beware of what you're hearing. Be cautious. What's the rush? Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Okay. So I think I've given everybody the opportunity to comment, question. So we'll go on. That was item 4B.
4C.
Yes. So now we're going to go to item 4C.
Right.
Reports from the city council, appointees. Oh, yes. Okay. So.
I do have a hand up that, that I should have asked. I'm sorry. Mandisa was trying to get to us. Mandisa, can you hear us?
Hello. Hi, everybody. My, the answer to my question was just where we are in the agenda. And Liz and Rochelle took care of that in the chat. So thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you for helping the chat, Liz and Rochelle. Thank you for helping the chat, Liz and Rochelle.
Okay. All right, so now we go on to reports from City Council appointees to regional organizations and committees. So Cesar, do you have anything to report?
Uh, there was a LACCO meeting. Uh, the budget was discussed, just a couple of items, informational items.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Freeman, do you have anything to report?
Yes, uh, we had an AMBAG meeting and also a super COG meeting from, uh, from all three, uh, three areas, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo, and, and our AMBAG area on, on the upcoming six, all of the Hapoelina numbers. And there's funding grants given out to the various jurisdictions. Um, our jurisdiction is completely controlled by COG, and so the, the division of the money will be done by, uh, by, by the Board of Directors of COG. And so we'll have to look to them to see exactly what happens. On monetary power, we had a executive meeting, and we discussed reorganizing the, the committee so we can have better representation from Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo areas. Is that really about it? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman DeVries, do you have anything to report?
No, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Well, I do have a, a, just a very brief report, but it is a very serious report. And that's for the seniors council, the area agency on aging. The governor and the state is cutting our budget by $8.5 million. And that means that it's going to affect us a lot here with the Pobenes de Adano, the food that we, we provide, the Meals on Wheels. It's just, the, the list goes on. But it's, I'll keep you guys posted, but we're, we're going to see if we can do something about it because we, as it is, we are operating on costs from 1987. A lot of the, the monies is still very old. It's from 1987. We're not up to date, and here they are cutting it back. So anyway, we're going to see if we can fight this and see if we can get seniors, our programs back. And because our numbers are going up, there's a lot of us baby boomers that are just, you know, there's a lot of us. So, you know, we need to take care of the seniors. So that's basically all I have to say on my report. And going on to item five, public hearing. Item A is property abatement. Do we have Charlie?
Yes, we do. Charlie?
I'm on the phone.
Did you want to open the hearing?
Yeah.
So let's go ahead and open the, the hearing now.
Hi, this is Charlie. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. I think this is after the 30-day period now, so we can go ahead and after this, the approval, I believe, we can just go ahead and start abating weeds. But we're still working with people on, on the properties. I mean, this whole time has been horrible for everybody, and we're trying to work as best as we can to get people to get compliant as fast, as quickly and as safely as possible.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions for Charlie? Councilman Flores, do you have any comments, questions?
No comments or questions.
Councilman Freeman?
No comments or questions.
Councilman DeVries?
No, no comments or questions.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
No.
Okay. Public, do we have any comments or questions from the public?
Anyone's hands raised?
Raise your hand if you have a question or a comment. Okay, so it doesn't look like we have anything from the public. And so do we want to discuss anything on, on this? Do we want to have any comments from the council members?
None here.
Okay, well, all I can say, Charlie, is keep working at it. And I've noticed that a lot of properties have been taking care of their weeds. And quite frankly, it looks a lot better than it did last year.
You know, I have, I have to give the community a lot of credit. You know, everybody's been real proactive and understanding, and a lot of them are taking care of it themselves. So we, they might have got a courtesy letter, a lot of them, but a lot of them had already taken care of it. So the community is really embracing it and taking care of the weeds, and they understand that, the, the life safety aspect of it. So kudos to the community for taking, taking a proactive approach and jumping ahead of it. So they're really, they're really kicking butt and taking care of it. So I really do appreciate it. It makes my job a lot easier.
Great.
Yeah, that's super nice to hear.
So do we, we have a possible action?
I don't see one in the staff report.
It's, I don't either. But it says no action required at this time.
So, but I thought in the past, as I watched this meeting last year, we gave Charlie some authority to, to levy fines or, or to take action.
Right.
But I didn't see that in the staff report.
Yeah, I don't see it in this.
Are you looking for action, Charlie, for clarification?
You know, that's usually what happens. You give us the approval, we go ahead and go, we debate it. But like I said, I'm, I'm trying to get compliance. And most of the time when I get ahold of the people for the property owners, we, we are, we are getting compliance. So this is taking me a little bit of time, and I don't want to go strongarm people. I'm working with people, and for the most part, people do want to get it, and they just forget about it sometimes, or just like, you know, realize, oh, I haven't seen it lately, if they don't live there. So, um, yeah, usually it's voted, and we go, and we go, we debate it. But we're still, we're still working on it. We're still moving forward.
Okay, all right. So then we can just maybe pass on the action, and then maybe next week, next month, if we need to take action, we will.
Okay.
Okay, so then.
Or we could, we could probably come back at a special meeting if we needed to.
Right, yeah. Okay, so now we go.
I'll go ahead and ask you to hold your staff to make sure we get into the proper verbiage to do what we need to do to continue on for the next meeting.
Okay, all right, Charlie, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so now we go on to action items. And item A, consider resolution 2020XX adopting a pavement management plan. Plan, not plant. Report from our city manager.
Thank you. Fortunately, I'm not relying on the same PDF. All right. Sorry, I'll be right with you. Why did I load this up? And it just went that way. Come on, there we go. Okay. All right, go to screen share. And we'll see. And sure that maybe. That didn't work.
Try again.
Okay, try again. There it goes. All right, okay. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the pavement management plan. And item 6A, what I refer to as the good, the bad, and the ugly. It's a requirement. Okay, let's do that. All right, it's a requirement through Measure G, when it was approved in 2018, that the, that the cities and the county do what's known as a pavement management program. And the pavement management program is a study of all the city streets, an assessment of each one. And that's why I use the term the good, the bad, and the ugly. And in this photograph, you can see what is a pretty good street on the top. And on the bottom, there's something called crocodiling and, and pavement splitting, and that's just all too common in our community. But we're not unusual. A lot of communities are struggling to maintain pavement. The gas tax was a popular resource for doing that. The gas tax is, is drying up, is not as many people are buying fuel, electric vehicles, and other things. So the resources aren't there to keep up the, the pavement as they were. So the state approved SB 1, and the county approved Measure G. And these were new tools for us to use to address our pavement. But we needed a management plan to do that. And so when you, when you assess the condition of a street, these are just some quick excerpts from a long 30-page study. These are the various conditions that you could have. And it's important to realize that when you manage pavement, that you try and avoid this breaking point between fair and poor. Because you can see on the right side of this curve, the cost of fixing issues on that side of the curve are $6.50 a square yard, which is a squarey seal essentially. And then to the left of this curve, as you drop below fair, it becomes up to $44 a square yard. So, should I admit that gauge? So, um, so this is the whole idea, is to go out and to look at our streets and, and see which, which, which streets are in which condition, and then have a two-pronged approach, one that preserves our good streets and then one that has, one that provides a strategy for, for, for our streets in worse shape. So this is an assessment. We have about 9.85 centerline miles of street in our city. Can anyone guess which one is the arterial? That would be the Alameda coming in 0.27 miles. And, and it is in actually really good shape. 83% is our pavement's condition index number, and that's a good number. All of our collector streets are all like Third Street and streets that our residential streets come to, they're, they're measured at about 61 PCI, or pavement condition index. And then residential streets do a little better than that, at 63%. And so our total is 62%. And the, the Measure G and SB 1 have goals for us to get all of our streets to at least 60%. So believe me, compared to the Salinas report I gave about 18 months ago, this is much better. And, and here's a pie chart that shows that we've got more good streets than bad streets. We're over that 50% line, and, and we want to stay up there as much as we can. So the report goes into some detail, and these are the estimated costs to repair our streets. If, if we had unlimited dollars, we could throw, you know, $6.2 million at it right now, we would have streets that, that, streets that you could fry eggs on. But we don't have that money, we don't have the resources. So what happens over a period of four years? So they're looking at whether or not the city has the means by which to invest, oh, towards $6 million towards its streets in these various ways. There's rehab, rehabbing portions of streets, that's the most expensive issue. And then you have preventative maintenance portion, which is filling cracks and potholes is a less expensive issue, one that our, one that our crews do on a regular basis now. So again, we, we look at the cost to maintain the Alameda at about only $18,000. The collector streets are the pricey ones at $2.5 million and, and $3.8 for residential, even higher. But this is over a period of five years. And, and what the city engineer has asked that we do tonight is just receive this report and, and help to meet our, our Measure G requirement. And then come back, and the consultant has got on their scope of work a way to go through different, four different scenarios in the budgeting, and how we could budget now for the next five years to, to meet these goals and to improve our PCI. So that's what a PCI is, and just introducing it tonight. We have a resolution to adopt it, but we'll come in and, and look at the, the finite details. And the finite details with the consultant here, where they can give you a, a really deep understanding about asphalt and pavement and some things like that. So I don't know if the council or the public have any questions. I'm happy to do that. But Mayor, I would like to get the resolution approved so that it meets the timing of the Measure G funds that we're using on Third Street today.
Okay. So Councilmember Flores, do you have any questions? On this report?
No, I have no questions. But, you know, we need to make a motion. I'll make a motion on it.
Well.
Comment?
I need a comment first.
Yeah. So Freeman, Councilman Freeman, do you, do you have any questions, comments?
I was really glad to see this. I didn't know it was going to have a 30-page explanation with that. I thought it was just going to be a couple of spreadsheets on, on, on the numbers. Those are, of course, at the very back. What's a theoretical question? I know it's a brand-new street out in, um, San Luis Obispo only has a score of 96. I was just looking what it took to get to 100. No one has to answer, it's a theoretical question. But, but, uh, brand-new street, you know, what does it take to get to 100? I'd like to talk to the engineer about that. Anyway, I think it's great and ready to vote on it after public comment.
Okay. Councilman DeVries, do you have a, a comment or a question?
No, no, Madam Mayor, no comment or question.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have any questions or comments?
I, I just have a quick question. The arterial street has an average PCI of 83. That's Third Street?
Right. No, 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 not Third Street. The arterial is the Alameda.
The Alameda.
The Alameda, in front of the windmill.
Yeah, and that, and it's just that section.
Okay. Thank you.
So, there you go. Welcome to San Juan.
Okay.
You're on our best street. Yeah. Put your, put your best street forward.
Yeah, all right. So do we have any public comment, questions?
I'd like to say something. This is Cara Bonk.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Cara.
Oh, hi. The street into town in front of Rancho Vista, you know, it's really bad condition. So I'm hoping that we can focus on fixing that one. I'm sure you all know how bad it is when you come off of 129.
Uh huh.
And as soon as you cross the city limits, it's full of potholes.
Yeah.
So hopefully that can be addressed. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cara. Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'd like to entertain a, a motion.
No move.
Hi, good evening. This is Jackie. And hi, Mr. Reynolds. I just remembered your name. Sorry, Dawn. Also, I want to put a pitch in for the residential street, Fifth Street, that is terribly bad. At one point, I think about a month and a half ago, someone put a marigold plant in one of the potholes. And then I didn't, I missed the portion about how much funding we would be getting from the measure. So I'm just wondering how much groundwater is allocated.
That would be, okay, you go ahead.
We're, we're using all, every, every dime we have now, which is about 14 months of sales tax revenue from Measure G, it's about $154,000. By June 30th, we'll have another $30,000 to apply to next year. And then we'll have 12 months worth of sales tax to add to that. So it's about $125,000 a year in Measure G. And SB 1 is a little better than that, about $175 or so. That's all pending the sales tax stabilizing and recovering.
Thank you. And just last comment, are you going to take up the subject of public parking fees that might help to augment our road cost? Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jackie. Okay, so I think we had a, a motion, but I, okay.
Cesar.
Vice, Councilman Flores?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution adopting a pavement management plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Oh, sir, come on.
Okay. That was Councilman Freeman that seconded.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we go on to item B, Consider Resolution 2020 XX Reopening the Historic Downtown. And that report is from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. It's been an exciting ride. I'm hoping maybe this week our plans won't change too much, so we can adjust to the plans that changed last week. So exciting when the county hustled and got its variance into the state last Tuesday, and as we anticipated in our business forum that Wednesday morning, the state may approve that variance and open up our businesses. And we've been talking for some time about being ready for when that happens, and try as we might, we're still, some businesses were more ready than others, obviously, but we're working together. And to that end, we are issuing 30-day encroachment permits for the Mission Cafe and for Doña Esters to try and get some tables out on Mariposa and Franklin, so that they can get started right away, expanding their ability to serve tables at safe distances, because it's all about reopening but maintaining that safety net and following the safety guidelines. So we've had some really constructive meetings with the business owners in our business forum, and members of the city council participated as well, as we looked at how we could open up in a way, I think, as the mayor put it, in San Juan's way, in a way that's best for our city, rather than being part of these larger groups and part of these larger meetings, because we are so unique in our county. We are the gem of the county, and so how do we do that? And I think it was Councilmember De Vries who called me and said, you know, we should look at Third Street, and what if we had just one lane there? And so when we met, I think it was last Thursday morning, out on Third Street, we had the fire department, thank you for bringing your engine out there, and we put the engine right center of the street, and we got out the tape measure the old-fashioned way, and we said, okay, about 15 feet for a fire truck, and 12 and 1/2 feet on either side, and Marshal Seboya, Charlie, helped us calculate what we would need to do and to make it safe for that fire truck, because if a fire truck can get down the center of the street, then the other vehicles can as well. Before I get ahead of myself, I think the council is in agreement that we would want to help all businesses to work to expand. So if JJ wants to expand onto their patio or into their parking lot, that we would support that during this crisis, Vertigo, the Vaz restaurant, others that are not on Third Street. Mostly, the focus of tonight's conversation is Third Street. So how would they do that? How would they expand the businesses? A common tool that we use at City Hall for engineering purposes is called an encroachment permit, and it gives a company, utility most frequently, the right to encroach on the public right-of-way, which is a technical term for street or sidewalk. It includes insurance, it includes responsibilities that the person who's encroaching, that has this permit, has to follow, but under certain conditions, you can use the public right-of-way as outlined in the permit. So it's not uncommon in festivals to do that, and it's not uncommon to just have a blanket public encroachment permit, but in this case, because we weren't sure which businesses would do it, and we want to leave things up overnight, I think it was decided, that the encroachment permit would have them be responsible for that 12 feet of space that coincides with their frontage. So if they have 30, 60, 90 feet of frontage on Third Street, then they would have that times 12. Not the most level area, I mean, it's a street, so it's designed to channel stormwater and other things, so given that, there are a few hurdles, but just a really neat idea of slowing traffic down to 5 miles an hour down the center of the street heading west from the Alameda to Macaleme, and where possible, install angle parking, so that the retail doing curbside and what have you still has the ability to have their patrons come to their store. And this is my fancy artwork and upside-down street names that I borrowed to indicate how this would look, the yellow being possible areas in front of restaurants that they would want to occupy for their businesses, and then even retail, of course, could take advantage. It would be kind of a perpetual sidewalk sale. And this was estimated to be set up this way for an initial period of six months. Gets a little tricky when it rains, and I was surprised to see it rain this week, but, you know, there are risks involved in everything we do. I had a chance to meet with the city engineer virtually, and she shared some concerns, having just received this on Friday. We want to make sure that we ensure safety of everyone involved, and her first concern, of course, is the construction that's happening on the west end of Third Street, because there are some big utility hookups with sewer and stormwater right at the intersection of Macaleme and Third Street, and so she thought that that may have a temporary impact on our ability to have vehicles coming westbound and then having to turn left or right at that intersection. There are no restaurants in that last block between Polk and Macaleme, and it would be temporary, but that's one thing that she's going to keep in mind as she comes up with policies for us to follow when we reopen Third Street with one lane. Parking is limited due to visibility concerns. She didn't want vehicles trying to back out that are adjacent to restaurant uses. There might be persons in the road and others, she thought we needed to look at that safety issue. She didn't recommend speed tables, she thought that was an expensive, more permanent solution. There is a possibility of getting the plastic tubes that go across the street if we needed to slow traffic down. She was thinking more like 15 miles an hour, and I think most of us were thinking closer to 5 miles an hour.
That's better.
So we'll play with, she does want to talk to a traffic engineer and get an expert's opinion on this, and she promised me that wouldn't take too much time. So she also wants to talk to the traffic engineer about ADA parking, accessibility for persons with disabilities. She thought that there were only three ADA spots on the four-block area, and that we'd want to take into consideration accommodating perhaps a few more ADA parking spots, and where would those go? So again, it would be professionally engineered, so that as someone came down the side streets, the side streets would pass through Third Street, and there would be barricades, but they would be able to turn right if they were coming from second, or left if they were coming from fourth, onto Third Street, and to travel down the lane. She also recommended that we have it professionally striped, and that we could do that inexpensively, because our striper will be on contract with Don Chapin, working on the Third Street project, and that we would do it in a painted fashion rather than the thermoplastic fashion, so that way it would go a lot faster and cost a lot less, but it would make it really clear and delineate exactly where the business encroachment begins and the city street ends, and line that up for us. So that's some of the thoughts since last Thursday that's gone into this project. Super exciting, though. It's something I've always dreamed of doing, and I think others in our community have had the same idea, what would that look like? So some other thoughts that the mayor and some of the others have talked about include design standards, having some kind of design that is the same but yet unique to our community, so that it looks organized and professional, and rather than thrown together. I mentioned the six-month term, and that we would have a reevaluation prior to the end of the six-month term, to see if we wanted to continue it, and under what conditions, what changes we would make. We want to look at street maintenance and cleanliness, and that that be a shared responsibility between the business owners and the city, but if we had, for example, barricades at each cross street, I've received some samples of some redwood boxes that can be bought for a reasonable price, and if we plant them, do we have our service organizations adopt those boxes and maintain those plants for us, or do we rely on staff to water those plants during the summer when it gets hot? But that could be a beautiful addition, but only if they're maintained. We don't want to be growing tumbleweeds and deadlines, so I've seen it happen, not in this community, but I've seen it happen. And that the businesses are responsible for adherence to the regulations, and another benefit to using the encroachment permits is that they can be revoked if necessary. So I think that's a decent summary of the proposal, and the resolution attached to the staff report that we're looking for action does include the studies, and does include a little bit of a budget from the General Fund Reserve to make this happen. So with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay. So Councilman Flores, do you have any questions or comments?
I think it's a real good idea. We should implement it.
Yes. Thank you. Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions, comments?
I pretty much agree with Caesar. I think it's an excellent idea, I think both in the short and the long run, it will work out well.
Okay. And Councilman De Vries, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Just a couple of follow-up comments to the city manager, Don. I just want to vote early that, to reiterate what you said, which I think we all feel and believe, and that is that the speed limit through this little stroll down Main Street should be 5 miles an hour max. I think the vision is to have motorists just really kind of crawl through there. I think that accomplishes a couple of things. First, it makes it a much safer experience, both for the motorists and for people who might be walking around. You know, if our vision for this Third Street experience is to have it be very walkable, have musicians playing, people may be going from venue to venue, then they may not cross exactly at a crosswalk or at an intersection, which we would want them to do, but I think anyone driving a motor vehicle through the area needs to proceed with caution. So I think 5 miles an hour is plenty. I also am not in agreement, I don't think, with the city engineer's comment that some kind of speed bump device is unnecessary without looking into it. I know those little yellow plastic ones seem to be pretty expensive. Joe and Julie Morris have put a few of those on the retreat road going up to St. Francis Retreat, doesn't look like a big deal, and would keep the speeds down low. Lastly, I want to reiterate another concept I shared with you, Don, and that is to see what friends of San Juan Batista's special relationships, like Don Chapin Company or Granite Rock, or maybe even Taylor Farms, how we might be able to leverage some of those relationships to sponsor things like real beautiful planting boxes and the plantings themselves, or have plants donated from Ace Hollister or Gilroy Lowes or something to really maximize the impact and the aesthetic without having a big hit on our budget. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Leslie?
Yeah, well said, Dan. One question, Don, you talked about a potential issue with backing up into diners?
Not necessarily dining space, but if a pedestrian is walking around the encroached area, around fencing and tables, that the vehicle would have a hard time seeing them in the driver's seat in an angled parking, looking out over the passenger back end.
So we might have to look at that, at the two spots at Bears and Brewery 25?
Possibly, and in front of...
As potentially not parking.
Or one less spot.
Or one, yes. Or one less spot, okay, okay. Perfect, okay. Good, good, good. And then you also talked about businesses would, businesses would have to be responsible and adhere to, did you call them guidelines, or did you call them something else?
No, it's going to be conditions within the encroachment permit.
Okay.
So they're not guidelines.
Yeah.
I'm getting tired of that word.
And, yeah, I need to, I have more comments about that later on at the end, conditions to the encroachment permit. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right.
Did Freeman have anything to add?
Yeah. Okay, and now it's my turn, and I just am going to agree with what Dan had to say. I think it has to be 5 miles an hour, no faster.
Absolutely.
No faster than 5 miles an hour. And, yeah, and I think it's maybe a good idea to put those, those, whatever you call them.
Plastic tubes.
Plastic tubes that Morris's have going up to the retreat. Those work really, really well. So, yeah, but I'm excited about this.
I'm super excited.
So I can hardly wait until it's all done.
Would we need to have a survey, a traffic survey, to do it to 5 miles per hour? We can't just say that, we can't go through? Do we have to?
We can go slower. I think going faster is the dangerous part.
Yeah, no, I think so.
And you're reducing the traffic, you're not increasing it.
Right. Didn't the engineer say we should go through a traffic study?
Traffic studies are generally done for environmental purposes, when you add more cars to an area or add more impact.
But we're not doing that.
Our intention is to reduce the impact.
So we don't need a traffic study, we can just say 5?
Deb can speak to this. We may have to have some kind of environmental...
I think you wouldn't be able to give tickets if you changed the speed limit. I think that would be the issue.
We... We would not be able to give, what if somebody's going 10 miles an hour, we can't give them a ticket?
Twice the speed.
Well, if they're going over the regular speed limit, but I think, you know, if you reduced it, technically, they could bite their ticket in court, then you wouldn't have a traffic survey supported.
So we would need a traffic survey to support that aspect, okay?
All right. Okay, so do we have any public comment on this?
I'd like to say something, Cara Bonk.
Okay, Cara, go ahead.
First of all, I like the idea, and I agree that it should be 5 miles an hour, but the design of what's going to go in there, I think should go before the Historic Resources Board, because this is our historic district, and they're supposed to review issues of that nature. As Don mentioned, we want to make sure it's, looks classy and not disjointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Okay.
Anyone's hands raised? Is anyone...
There's a comment in the chat.
Okay.
So in the chat... Sorry, I'm trying to get to it.
Is Liz on? Can Liz read it? Who said there was one? Who was that?
Liz, can you read one of the chats?
Okay, Mrs. B is asking, she says that this is going to be a beautiful addition to San Juan Batista's business community, but what will be the projected cost for each business to participate in the project? Also, may some of the wineries be willing to donate old wine barrels as planters?
Thank you. We, I was, as proposed, the encroachment fee, the encroachment permit itself would be issued free of cost to the merchant, and we would call that a business loss in terms of reimbursement from FEMA. So it's a stimulus to encourage merchants to get that encroachment permit and get out there. Having said that, through conversations with other business owners, there is an expense that they will incur, the fencing, the tables, chairs, umbrellas, that type of thing. I'm not sure what the, what 4-foot-tall wrought-iron fencing, for example, would cost. You could get 8-foot lengths of it, is that $500? I don't know what that costs, so it depends on the size of each area as well. So I think that we're looking for business owners to provide that kind of stuff for themselves, and so that's where the expense would be.
Okay. All right, any other, any other comments?
Other questions?
Questions?
Hi, this is Rochelle Egan, and I was speaking to Georgiana Galardi today, and mentioned that possibly some of the service clubs here in San Juan might be willing to donate their time to keep up the flowers or plants or what have you, and she said some of them might prefer just sponsoring one by, you know, donating $100 or something for a couple of weeks or months' worth of landscaping or water upkeep by city employees.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Fran, did you have something to say?
Can you hear us, Fran?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Okay, yes.
Okay, I was just typing. I think one of the things that's going to be really important, we talked about curb appeal and just making sure that we have some kind of consistency throughout the street and how the look and feel of everyone. And we're going to, you know, we certainly need to talk about that and provide that for each of the businesses that are going to participate.
Thank you, Fran.
Yes, I see your chat now, Fran. Okay.
Okay. So we go on to a possible action?
Yes, there's a resolution.
You can make a motion. Make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
To adopt a res...
I second it.
Okay. So Cesar Flores made the motion.
Will come the Councilmember DeVries?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present in motion as stated by the mandatory consensus unanimously.
Thank you. All right.
That's great.
That's a beautiful thing.
And we could bring that forward to the Historic Resources Board June 2nd if we have some...
Exactly.
So to follow up on Cara's comment, that's great advice, and then we don't have to make the decision.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So now we move on to item seven, and seven A is City Gate and Citizen Survey Summary. Our City Manager is going to give us that report.
Thank you. All right. We've made it through the Third Street. And here to City Eight. Okay. All right. Members of the council and members of the public, we started a process actually back in December when we looked at our annual audit, and for me, as my first year as City Manager, that was my benchmark, to find out where the city sits financially and have six months behind me to look at the way we stood organizationally. We went from there to the mid-year budget amendments in January, and the council approved my request for some money to fund a consulting project that would involve a consulting firm by the name of City Gate. And City Gate is comprised of retired public administration professionals, and we were assigned a retired City Manager who came from the Public Works background, a good person to help us out, and also a retired Finance Director. And boy, what a great time in our history to have a Finance Director that our CPA Wendy and I could rely on when it came time to try and anticipate the impacts to our general fund based on our current conditions and sales tax loss and so forth. So that was nice to have. February 15th, the goal of the organization, there's also an organizational study. So we wanted to look at the strength and the resilience of the General Fund, the Water and Wastewater Enterprise Funds, all three funds moving forward. Those are our three three-legged stool that we stand on. And then to do an organizational study for us as well, for, as they put it, to make sure that we were getting the most bang for our buck, that we had staff where we needed staff, and that we had contractors where that was a more appropriate strategy.
Somebody needs to mute themselves.
Somebody needs to mute themselves. Okay.
Somebody needs to mute their mic.
You're right, Cesar. Our process started in February. On February 15th, we did our community goal-setting process, which was a half-day productive process, and that led to a survey of the community in March. And in March and April, City Gate interviewed city staff and analyzed our data and financial records.
Someone needs to mute themselves, please. Can you hear us?
Can we all check to make sure that we're muted? Thank you. From our February 15th strategic planning session... From our, please mute yourself.
Also, the host can mute everybody.
Can you please do that for now? Mute everybody.
We're the host.
Yep. Somebody's having a party.
I can't even find my mouse. Where's the mouse? There it is. Well, this could take a while.
Fran Fitzharris, if you can hear me, you need to mute your microphone.
Okay, I can mute it.
Yeah.
Okay, Cesar's good. We're good.
Okay. It sounds like everybody's muted now.
Which is good. I'm going to mute Rich. Okay, I think we got it.
Yeah, it looks like you did it.
I think we did. Okay, sorry. Thank you. So the five objectives that we came forward with from February 15th included, the first goal was to create, promote, and nurture partnerships within our community, something we're good at, been doing for a long time, and some of these partnerships we're rebuilding with the state parks, for example, and with the school district, school boards, working together to solve problems and making the most of our volunteer efforts, revisiting that from our strategic planning that we used, group that we used to have to new ideas. Secondly, preserve, protect, and promote our community assets and economic vitality while maintaining historical and cultural charm. This was a contribution from the San Juan Committee, and it's just something that everyone embraced that day as we talked about what best suited San Juan Batista. Invest, maintain, and strengthen, plan, and renew our vital infrastructure. So the infrastructure was a priority and became one of our five goals to focus on. Promoting public amenities, our parks and trail systems and bike riding and other things, our proximity to the Pinnacles and the Anza Trail and other great amenities that are close by to San Juan Batista. And then the quality of life, which spoke principally to public safety and to what we phrase in our survey as safe neighborhoods. The survey results were really great. I want to thank Rochelle for helping tabulate them. We received 156 responses, and I would guess only 20 or 30% of those were on Survey Monkey, and Rochelle manually entered the rest of them so that we could analyze them. So that was really great. 8% response is pretty good for our city. The number one attraction for our community is, of course, the small-city feel and its historic culture. The history of our city and festivals finished the close first and second. The most concerning issue to our citizens appears to be the failing infrastructure. So you look at that goal number three from strategic planning, and what came out of that meeting was right on, we have to look at our failing infrastructure. And the highest priority following in suit with that is fixing the water and the sewers and the roads. So I'm glad I have a public works background and have something to offer the city in that regard. The City Gate report is attached to this and helps guide us. Along with the report, we were provided several spreadsheets that we can use to project out five years, 10 years, under certain assumptions. So we have certain assumptions for our water system in a spreadsheet, and as we change those assumptions, we can get financial projections. So those are really great for working on rate studies and other things. So if we change the rate by this much, how much revenue will that generate? Will it be enough to offset our costs? On the General Fund, things like wind conditions change. So when our sales tax is cut in half, what does that mean to our General Fund? And we can project that out over time with a slow recovery or a fast recovery. We can play with that, and we can use those models. So that's a really great takeaway from the City Gate report. Some of the affirmations in the report include the health of our General Fund. So the cuts that we made earlier this year were to preserve that reserve, the reserve amount that we have there. It's more than a year of reserve, which we're going to need to rely on if the recovery is slow. But if the recovery is quick, then we'll have those resources there, and we'll have that rainy day fund, as the state refers to it. Sorry for the typos. I'm just noticing the typos in this. We need to formalize our capital improvement budget, and we're taking a lot of steps to do that. The pavement management plan is an example of how we would formalize our capital improvement plan and use those five-year projections to set aside money incrementally and add up gas. So if Measure G comes in at $80,000 or $100,000 a year, and we have a half-million-dollar project, in year five, we can afford to make that improvement. So we need to have a kind of thoughtful, mindful way of managing our capital improvement budgets. Reviewing the water and sewer rates is something we're in the process of doing now. We've sent out an RFP, and we're looking for a consulting firm. Our water and sewer rates are good for five years. They're set in ordinance, and they expire June 30th. So we want to make sure that we have new sewer and water rates coming forward, even in this uncertain time. If we have to postpone increases, then that's what we do to help our residents. But for the time being, we're going to go follow through with the increasing the rates. That's a recommendation in the report and something we're already doing. Eliminate manual transactions and using integrated financial software. In the past, we were taking data from our QuickBooks database and typing it into a Word document. I think Laura Cent was doing a lot of that work a year ago, and it's difficult and it's complicated. You're basically entering the data twice. So to have an integrated system means that we have a system that can take the data from the QuickBooks and summarize it in a nice way so that it makes sense for the public to see in a budget. I think we've taken that step with a firm called ClearGov, and we have a better way of processing our budgets now. It's easier, less prone to mistakes, and more functional for us down the road. Catching up on deferred maintenance is where our water and wastewater master plans and our pavement master plan, pavement management plan are going to help us, are going to point out where our vulnerabilities are. Deferred maintenance has been an issue in our community for too long, and we need to have a structured plan to address it. And then, of course, strengthening community development. I think that's something that we've needed to do for some time, and we have to allow time for our General Fund to rebound so that we can begin to re-staff and restructure our community development function. So getting close towards the end here, the budget will follow the steps to focus on infrastructure. That's what the survey has required. That's what the Water Board has required. That's what the community expects. So you'll see a focus on infrastructure with any money we can scrounge after the operations and maintenance are done. Like we said in the pavement management plan, we can't allow further deterioration while we're fixing things. We need to be doing both at the same time. And consider a new economic development strategy for recovery. That's something that if we brought on a high-level planning position, they could be working with economic development as well as with community development. I think they go hand in hand, and I don't know if the city's ever had a formalized economic development program that focuses on business retention as well as attraction, because we need to be able to fill vacancies and attract new businesses to our community as well as retain the ones that we have. So that's a focus that City Gate agrees that we should be looking at in the future. And then, as we restructure community development, we work on the urban growth boundary. I think the community all agreed six weeks ago when we talked about urban growth boundaries that that was a critical missing link in our general plan. And so I look forward to seeing that proposal from Harrison Associates hopefully here next week to plug into our capital improvement budget. And then I think historic preservation, as seen in the survey and in the valuable assets in our community, that historic preservation needs to rise as a priority for us again, and we need to re-staff that and work more closely with the historic preservation interests and our Historic Resources Board to make that happen. And so with that, that's a culmination of a long time, but I wanted to circle back because we're truly grateful for the community that completed those surveys. We're happy that the City Council funded these studies so that we knew where we were at, and it's really going to help inform our budget as we move forward. So with that, it's a presentation, so there's no action required, Mayor. I just appreciate the opportunity to bring all this information to you and basically tell you what you already knew.
So with that, do we have any questions or comments from Councilman Flores?
I'm here.
Okay, do you have any questions or comments?
No comment, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm just glad it was done. It gives us a chance to prioritize our goals.
Right.
And I think it's important.
Good, thank you. Councilman DeVries, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, just one comment by way of follow-up. Don, when the proposal comes in on the urban growth boundary from David, I might be looking for ways to shave some money off of that. I have no idea or expectation of the amount that it's going to come back for, but presumably there might be some ways to save money off of it, you know?
Right. Or at least get the priorities in order and maybe spaced over more than one fiscal year.
That's a good point, too. Yeah, I mean, we can phase it.
Yeah, good. Is that it?
You bet.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
No, it's really nice to see this being all pulled together. It was a really great exercise, and I was thrilled to be a part of that.
Thank you. And ditto on all the other comments.
And ditto on all the other comments.
Yeah, okay. Do we have any public comment? Raise your hand if you have a public, if you're from the public and you want to make Do we have anybody? No? Okay, all right. So then we'll go on. And we already covered B. And so then now we go on to item eight, comments from City Council. Does anybody have any comments?
No comment.
Okay.
None at this time.
All right. Danny Jo.
A no comment. I'm just really excited about Third Street. I think that's going to be very special.
I do, too.
Vice Mayor?
I do. San Juan Batista closed up. It's closed up to, one, because we had to, but two, to stop the spread of COVID-19. And I appreciate that we all did things the right way. As far as our reopenings were concerned, we started with hospitality and restaurants and worked together to make sure that they opened safely for themselves and their businesses, their families, and the community, and started with curbside service only. Huge endeavor, and everybody followed the rules and guidelines accordingly. The merchants waited patiently, and I so appreciate them doing that. That was huge. And then they asked how they could open up their businesses. Again, we came together, and within a day or so of the notification moved into Phase Two, merchants were able to open up safely according to the guidelines, the recommendations, the checklist, the self-certifications. And I really, really appreciate the lengths and the patience that they took to do that. And then the other businesses waiting for their turn to open up. These guidelines are in place for a reason. They're in place to protect the owners of the businesses. They're in place to protect customers and the community. I really don't want to see us going backwards and closing the city again. I appreciate... I appreciate all of the help that all of our businesses are doing to ensure that safety and to follow the required guidelines and not to say, thanks for doing what you did on opening up. I want to continue to work as a city, I want to continue to work as a community, and I want to continue to make sure that we're doing everything correctly and safely. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. And city manager, do you have any closing thoughts, comments?
I feel like I've been talking all night, Mayor, I'm fine, thank you.
All right, so do we have any comments from our city attorney?
No, none. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we adjourned.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We're adjourned.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, Mandy Sander, hand up.
Hey, Rich, are you still on? Rich?
No, he's not.
Oh, okay. I wanna get rid of that, I got my guy in my... I got rid of one, and now I got another one.
Pass it to not on the agenda, Cesar, thank you very much.